We're ready.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the August 27, 2024 Millbrae Special City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Pappin.
Here.
Mayor Fung.
Here.
Three members of the City Council are present.
Thank you so very much, and for those who are able, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Please be seated, and we're going to start this evening with public communication. And this is the portion of the agenda reserved for those who wish to comment on an item not appearing on tonight's agenda. We only got four items. However, a speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of our city. And each speaker will have maximum three minutes. And the speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council member nor the public. Let's see. We have two online, although no hand raised, and I'm not seeing any speaker slip at the moment. Would you like to speak on public communication? Nope, okay, all right, okay. So, closing public communication, seeing we have no speaker slip, we are moving on to consent calendar. Adoption of a resolution to certify the election result of July 23 special election, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is a consent item, so if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. And if there are, I'd recommend pulling it from consent. Other than that.
Excellent. We have, okay, I can entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Pappin second. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin. Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Consent item number pass, number five, passed by a vote of three.
Okay, excellent. So we adopted a resolution to certify the election result on July 23 special. New business, nomination of an election of a vice mayor in action. City Manager, would you please?
Well, I'll hand this over to the City Clerk for a quick briefing, Mr. Mayor. Or I can just cut to the chase here.
Yes, please.
Now that we have three council members due to the outcome of the special election and the recall. One of those was Vice Mayor Goodman that was recalled, so that leaves the vacancy for the Vice Mayor position. As you know, the city adopted protocols. Protocols are a guide. It's not an ordinance, so it's not law. Neither Councilmember Snyder nor Councilmember Pappin, in terms of the protocols, are in line for Vice Mayor. But given the situation and the circumstances, the City Council is free to nominate and vote for a Vice Mayor. So there isn't any protocol that says, you know, one council member is in, is in line versus the other council member.
Councilmember Snyder.
I would like to nominate Gina Pappin to be Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the nomination. Would you like to accept the nomination, Councilmember Pappin? Okay, all right, thank you. We have a nomination and we have an acceptance. I just want to, I actually have a spiel ready to go. It would be nice if you do. I just want to ensure continuity of the government. I don't expect myself to get sick nor get run over by a truck, but, you know, as a mayor, I have a duty. I have a duty to ensure the continuity and the continued functioning of the government in all circumstances. The line of success, the line of succession has to be preserved at all time. And that's the essence of this action is to ensure at any given time, somebody. At any given time, there is a leader in the city that will keep the city functioning and keep driving the ship forward. That's the essence why I asked the City Manager to put this item on the agenda. So now that we have a motion, go ahead.
We're hoping nothing happens to any member of this council.
Of course.
We look forward to serving with each and every council member up here, so thank you.
Okay, excellent. Any public comment on this item? No hand raised online, no speaker slip, closing public comment, City Clerk, would you please?
Do I have to second?
Yeah, you, well, you accepted the nomination. I take that as a second.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
All right, the City Council appoints Councilmember Pappin to the office of the Vice Mayor by the vote of three to zero.
Okay, they'll be in oath of office, Councilmember Pappin, Vice Mayor Pappin. Of course.
Oh, to get sworn in, oh yeah.
City Clerk, were you ready?
Constitution of California and the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor. Just don't jump the gun. All right, please be seated, Vice Mayor Pappin. All right, so moving on to the next item, number three, which is the review and approval of council communication to the city, to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors requesting county withdraw the offer to purchase La Quinta Inn and Suites for permanent supportive housing, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a little bit of background, as you may recall, July 11 of 2023, so a little bit more than a year ago, the City Council heard a presentation from San Mateo County officials regarding the county initiated proposal to acquire the La Quinta Inn and Suites, which is located at 1390 El Camino Real here in the city of Millbrae, for permanent supportive housing. So the county initiated project was primarily funded and an application was submitted to the state Housing Community Development for Home Key Funds. The cost of the acquisition by the county is $35 million with another $15 million allocated for rehabilitation into apartment units, so converting the hotel to 75 units for, for low-income residents. So in addition, as you know, soon after that July 11 presentation, the city of Millbrae communicated to county that they needed to comply with Article 34 of the state constitution. And again, real briefly, Article 34 states that if a governmental agency is the developer and acquires property as a developer to utilize those taxpayer dollars for that project, it has to go to a vote of the people. And so we identified the requirements under Article 34. We're currently in litigation. We've appealed Judge Feyman's decision, and that is, is moving forward. However, the county failed to comply with our request. We bring it currently, as of last week, the final round of Home Key Funds were announced by the governor. The governor announced that final round, there's $130 million remaining in the Home Key Funding Program. That was on August 14, and the county's application was not funded. So as a result, and verifying that this is the final round of Home Key and that the Board of Supervisors' resolution for the acquisition and conversion of the La Quinta Hotel was, was adopted by the resolution to be funded by Home Key. And now that that Home Key funding is no longer available and it wasn't awarded, I believe it makes sense for the City Council to submit a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting that the county withdraw their offer to purchase La Quinta. And so the letter is attached in the staff report. And in summary, Mayor, you know, that pretty much covers it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the letter is a draft for your review, and we welcome any comments, suggestions, or additions or changes to the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any comments, suggestions? Go ahead. Go ahead.
City Manager, I like the letter. I read the letter. I had a couple of questions, though, and the mics are really sensitive tonight. In the letter, it says the La Quinta's 99 rooms. I thought it was 100 rooms with one of those rooms being the manager room. Just clarify, if I'm wrong, you don't have to say anything. I appreciated the language in there that said the premise of Home Key was blighted properties, but the website on the state of California also used to say, and to cause no local economic harm. In fact, it was supposed to do the opposite. It was supposed to stimulate economics. So could, if, if the council agrees to add language along that line. There was something else, again, I don't have my notes in front of me, but the Article 34 section in the letter, I still believe that the Board of Supervisors will bring that back for the March election, March 2025 election on that. So I'd like that. And the problem, having attended the hearing at the judge's on May, on April 3, and the final ruling that we hadn't faced economic harm, but the businesses in Millbrae have already faced economic harm. If this is trying to be a nicy-nice letter, we can leave that out, but I, I would like, and actually, maybe it is in the letter, that it said that we have lost the shuttle, we have already, our hotels have also experienced economic harm on that. So I'd like to make sure that we kind of add a little bit there to reflect that both the hotel across the street from La Quinta and the Fairfield have suffered harm. That, I think. Oh, that was it. In the letter, you do talk about something that council, that Vice Mayor Pappin had found, and I'm using this quote all over town, that we are the fastest-growing city in San Mateo, the fifth in the Bay Area, and the 10th in the state of California. I'd put the whole three in there on that. And because I keep, every time there's an article about us saying how bad we are, I have to write those repair. I want to, and I am, writing or calling those reporters to say, uh-uh. So let's make sure that's in the letter. And I'm very appreciative that you found that data. I went to the government's website. We might even want to put that website from the state of California in the letter.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would request that we do cite to that reference, the state of California. Just a little footnotes are favored. I thank you, Councilmember Snyder. Those are great additions here. I wonder, you have Supervisor Slocum and members. Is it President Slocum?
Yes.
And not Supervisor Slocum? From the first line?
He is the president of the board.
Yeah, we'll make that change.
Okay. And then. Okay, okay, just came in. I'm like, I think we're all signing it, are we not? Yes, well, wait, we're missing. Oh, there it is.
Three of us.
My computer didn't catch it all, excuse me. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Just, I think if there's a few things that I think it might be relevant to add to the letter is that this has just gone on long enough that the people who works in the hotel, all 38 families who works in the hotel, in the restaurant, and the small business owner, they need to be able to move on and plan their lives around it. They can no longer live in the shadow of this cloud and unknown, not knowing if they're going to wake up and have a job tomorrow, not knowing that they're going to have a business tomorrow. I mean, if their stove is broken, does the small business still invest in fixing the kitchen? We just need to give people clear directions and clear answers as to what needs to happen at the site. People's lives needs to move on. They need to be prepared for their futures and the kids' future. And it would be a disservice to the community and the business community if we don't give them a solid answer as to which way it's going to go. So I think that needs to be loud and clear to the supervisor because we're talking about the lives of the people who are being deeply affected by this big cloud over their head. I want to make sure the letter stated that. Go ahead, and then Gina after.
Thank you, Mayor, good point. In addition, then, to the two hotels, the other hotels impacted. The original restaurant, the three young restaurateurs who put their heart and soul, bought it in November of 2019, remodeled it, spent $150,000, I think.
Correct.
On the kitchen.
Yes.
When ended up leaving. So it's already a new, so the harm has already been done, and they were young restaurateurs. I actually brought people in to meet them. And so we have already, we, the community of Millbrae, have already felt that pain.
And it is a minority-owned business, it's an immigrant family that owns the business.
Yeah, I, I think that's extremely important to put that in, and also the number of employees that he had that are now unemployed. I think that's critical.
And just as County Manager, Mr. Caligie, said, any family could be one paycheck away from being homeless. And these are the 38 families that are now being deeply affected by this imminent decision. Hopefully, as quickly as possible that they can get some clarity as to which way they're going to need to move forward so that they can all move on with their lives. And that's, we're here as a governmental agency, we're here to give people pathways to success. You know, we're not here to sabotage anybody. So we want to make sure that these families, these all 38 families and the small business can have clarity about their future. And that's what they deserve, and that's what we need to give them. And that's what this letter represents. Okay, with that said, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of the letter with the changes noted by the council.
We can wait for a second to discuss. I was just going to reiterate to make sure that we caught everything. So just in summary, and we'll add this in, adding the growth rate at both San Mateo County, Bay Area region, and state of California. Mentioned the loss of the shuttle, mentioned that this has gone on far too long and without knowing if people have jobs and a business to go to. It's just gone on in the unknown far too long. It's time to, time to reach closure on it. Minority-owned business and the number of employees. And then the last one was, again, the premise of Home Key to add in no harm or no negative fiscal impact on local agencies.
Thank you, City Manager. Legal, you have something? Oh, yeah, of course. Well, let's take some public comment and we'll get back.
Sure.
I don't have any hands, so, oh, now I have a hand on Zoom. Do we have any public speaker who want to speak on this item in the audience? Nope, okay, all right. We have a speaker online, City Clerk.
Dan, please go ahead and accept on mute.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me, councilmembers?
Yes.
Excellent. My name's Dan Stedig from Pacifica. I'm, I'm pleased to see how you guys have all come together on this, on this issue, and I think you hit some really good points here. One item that, that wasn't mentioned might be the suggesting to the county the possibility of making the small business hole for the damages and the uncertainty that, that Mayor Fung mentioned and, and some other possible things there. You know, you're, you're like, like Mayor Fung had mentioned, the, they've kind of been in limbo for a while, and they haven't been able to execute their plan or, or build their businesses. There are small restaurants like Councilmember Snyder mentioned, et cetera. And perhaps a suggestion of, of one line in there, just asking the county to consider making the small, the Millbrae small businesses, they damaged hole. That'd be my only suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Stedig. Any other comments? I think we're good.
We do not have any speaker slip, and we don't have any hands online for this item.
Okay, all right, closing public comment on item number three, bring it back to the council, you have further comment?
I, I support what the member from, the representative from Pacifica said. Sorry, it's a day. My question would be, given that I was part of the City Manager, our Community Development Director, we did meet with the hotel and talked with the county, with County Executive Caligie there about the shuttle, maybe along the lines of what Mr. Stedig said, how we can get the shuttle back in place, because that helps all of us. Getting that shuttle back from SFO to our hotels is critical in keeping them full. On that, so Tom, you, the letter was lovely, I'm sure you can figure that out.
Mr. Mayor, so what I have in mind, just to share with the council, is something that, you know, would provide a funding source for re-establishment of the shuttle and also keeping the small businesses whole from any.
Damages.
Impact or damage, or I want to say damages, I'll work with the city term, but any loss of revenue or business during this.
Uncertainties.
Uncertainties, yeah, I think that's a, uncertainty is a great word.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, we'll take a motion.
Motion, oh, and last question. Is it better to go out just under the mayor or under all three of our signatures?
I think all three of us.
All three, okay. Motion to approve the letter with the changes as stated by the City Manager and with the change of all three of our signatures.
Okay, it's already on the letter.
Oh, mine has just one. Oh, okay, all right.
Any seconds? All right, we have a second from Vice Mayor Pappin. Would you please, City Clerk?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin. Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Item number three, passed by a vote of three zero with addition verbiage, additional verbiage from the City Council.
Thank you so much, moving along. Item number four, discussion and directions on filling vacancies in the City Council District Two and District Four seats. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand this over to Elaine Tran, our City Clerk. We have a PowerPoint slide just to, so you can see visibly what your options are. I know our city attorney, Mr. Lim, had sent the City Council correspondence pursuant to the law, and this just restates what is afforded to you. I know Elaine will get into it, but I think that that very last line under number two, there's been a lot of questions, I think, on the community mayor, the, the listening session you had last Saturday, this was brought up. But the law does not allow for an interim council member to be appointed prior to the March election. So you either have to make a decision on one or two, so. Ms. Tran.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. So after the recall election certification, there's two-seat vacant. In order to fill these vacancies, the City Council do have the option to either appoint a council member to the vacant seat for their major of the term until 2026 or call for a special election to be held earlier than March 4, 2025, to fill these vacancies. And by law, you only have 60 days to do so, and I believe the date, the last day for action to be taken will be October 22 of this year. As City Manager mentioned, the law does not allow for an interim council manager to be appointed prior to the March election. And staff is available to answer any question. We do have City Attorney David Lim here to help as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any idea if a special election were to be held on March 4, how long would it take for the votes to be certified? Would you say roughly 30 days?
Yes, the government, the election code do allow for the county to have 30 days to certify, just like we did with the special.
So that means if a special election were to be selected, then that means the certification happens there about April 3, April 4, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just so we're clear on the timeline here. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm not clear on the timeline here. So real quick, I understand the county was very late in making their announcement. Was it, we have to go before 5:00 PM or after 5? I mean, they took their sweet time on the last day.
I think it was 4:40, 4:50, right, that they certification, but.
To count 20 votes, that's what it was? You took that much time?
Well, my understanding in the, in the communication we had with, with the county elections office was since that they, they provided a public notice of the date that they would certify the election. And prior to the election, that, that date was August 22. And so the county elections office felt that they could not certify the election until that published date of August 22. So that, that's.
And they couldn't do it that morning, they had to do it like 4:40.
Yeah, that, that I don't know, but, but also, I think legally, no matter what, they have to certify within 30 days.
And Madam, Madam Vice Mayor, I can offer some clarification. Excuse me. At the request of the mayor and City Manager, I contacted County Council pretty early in the process to clarify what they meant by those 20 challenged ballots. I think that was the terminology on their website. Challenged ballots did not mean what most people think, you know, that somebody challenged the validity of those ballots. The, the term challenged ballots mean that 20 people submitted ballots that had some deficiency in the eyes of the county election official, meaning either the signature didn't match the registration card, the envelope wasn't fully closed, maybe postage date stamp was not legible. I, I'm not exactly sure. But under the law allowed to the county elections official, he determined that he wanted to give those 20 individuals the full opportunity under the law to try to correct their ballot so that every vote counts. And I know that there was some consternation by this council and other folks, but that was the county election official's call. He believed that even though it was clearly an overwhelming vote in favor of one, of recall, he did want to give those 20 individuals a chance to come in and correct their ballot. So I think he sent a letter, or I think, he sent the letter to those 20 addresses saying you have until this date at this time to come correct it. And I think once he sent that letter, they weren't going to call it early, so to speak. So I think the letter, and I did not see the letter, so I can't speak to it, but this is what I was told by County Council. They waited until, you know, the last possible moment to give those 20 people a chance to verify their vote. When they didn't, then they sent the letter.
Do we have any idea which ones were verified then thereafter? I'm just curious.
I do not.
We do not.
All of that, and we don't know.
And, and just to be fair, that may not be relevant in this discussion here. I mean, the question I had.
The vote counts, and I was just curious if those individuals were able, were actually contacted and were able, given the opportunity to correct.
And I think the point here is that.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the point, I think, that if we were to go for a special election route happening on March 4, 2025, then it would take roughly 30 days to certify that election, which would take us all the way to the beginning of April 2025, which, from now, which is, for all intended purposes, I look at at the beginning of September. Eight months of gap from this day, a little more than eight months. Well, so September, October, November, December, January. Well, so September, October, November, December, January, February, March, April. That's eight months from today. Roughly eight months and a week or two, anyhow. So, give or take, of leadership gap and representation gap. So that's something we need to consider as we approach this discussion, as to these two options that are in front of us. So with that said, go ahead, Councilmember Schneider.
Again, not being an attorney and having read the language, it says, we can't appoint to fill the vacant seats either through December or through March. I'd love to get, I guess I'm going to ask for a second opinion. Here's my position. If we appoint, we are appointing people who will not have been elected. And given that our population has shown that they support using the power of recall, what if they want to recall one of these appointees, and there won't have been an election? So how many signatures do you get to establish a recall? To me, this is just one of the questions. We're in the middle of summer, kids are back in school, no one's paying attention right now. We've come through trauma. We collectively, the people of Millbrae and staff and everyone have been through trauma. I'd like to use today to come up with all of those questions that are still outstanding, like, how would we do a recall if one of these appointees does something that the community does not like? We base the recall on the number of votes in the previous election. There's got to be clarification for that. On top of that, we fought the county over the right to vote for our future. And I have to admit, there's someone that I'm not a huge fan of, but at the Board of Supervisors meeting and in a letter to the Daily Journal, they said, well, Millbrae, you've wanted a vote, so therefore the county should do its Article 34 vote and let us do the vote. But here now, if we appoint, we are taking away the residents of District Two and District Four's ability to vote. So I think we should challenge the state interpretation of whether we can fill, we can appoint between now and then, and, but we have an election, and they have to run and get the vote of the people. Otherwise, the recall is just one thing, but how do we know who these people really are? And then the other thing, I think, tonight, we are supposed to look at what should go into the application. And I'm just going to say, I have for years tried to get our applications for committees and commissions to be more detailed. You know, something more than how long have you lived in Millbrae and where did you go to college? I would love to see that people who are, we might appoint, actually show an interest in government, a long interest, and/or have served in government in some capacity and know how to run the business for the next two and a quarter years without the vote of the people. So I think there's a lot of work we need to do before making any decision tonight.
Okay, I recognize that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay, this is the first time we're talking about it. I think the public does need to be involved. I'm kind of thinking that we open it up, and tell me if this is even allowed, we open it up for appointment, we see if we like anybody, and if we don't, we can still call an election within that
Within 60-day time period.
So the reason I suggest that is that the people would then see who's interested. They would hear, because this all has to be done in public, they would hear from them, because I've seen this done in other cities, where the people who are interested come up and they tell the public who they are. Actually, my sister went through this, and she didn't get the appointment, but then people knew who she was, and she then ran for office thereafter. So I really want the people to be a part of the process, and I think if we open it up to anybody who might be interested, then they could come before the council and the public. The public would see them, we would see them. And then we could also decide that, hey, this is great, we heard from you all, we're still not comfortable, or we are comfortable, and go from there. But I really would love to open this up so the people see who's interested and get to know people who may have considered it, may not have considered it. I think that is a really important aspect of being transparent and including the public in the process. I have, you know, I don't have any mindset either way. I think there are probably some great people in both districts who we have no idea who they are, who might be interested, and we get to see who they are too. So that's kind of my thought process out of the gate. Council nodded that we could probably do something like that if we choose to. Those are my thoughts at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As far as I'm concerned, you know, I have great concern about this process as to, you know, what the community would like to see, how they would like to see this move forward, and how to bring the community involved and make sure that the public is part of this decision-making process here. That's why on the August 24, you know, Listening Forum, I particularly asked the public as to how they think of it. And we spent an hour on that discussion, you know, both city manager and city clerk were there, and they were very kind to help host the, you know, town hall Listening Forum. You know, we actually hand out some, you know, survey to people, and, you know, out of the 57 attendees with 36 responses, 30 of them favors an appointment, four of them favors a special election, and two were undetermined. That's not entire community, but that's a survey as to what some of the community who did hear about this discussion and wanted to come in, and that's what their comments were. That's where their intentions are. And there has been a robust discussion with the public on the process, and most people do, you know, want to make sure that this is as open and as transparent as possible. This is an important process. And one of the most important thing here is that, you know, the special election occur because the community want to be heard, and we want to ensure everybody get a chance to be heard, including this process, whether it is an appointment or a special election. And I understand your comment there a moment ago, the Madam Vice Mayor, that we could embark on a process to look for an appointment, go through that process, and see how the public reacts to that. And then within that 60-day timeline, if the community does not get behind that effort, then we can certainly call it a special election at the end of that process. So I think we have some options here. And I see your hands up. I'd like to take some public comment, and then we can come back for more discussion, if that's okay. And for the public, if you want to chime in on this issue, now is the time to fill out a speaker's lip, and we see someone
Mr. Mayor
Step up.
Does the council desire a response to some of the legal issues raised?
We're certainly left to hear from the legal.
Okay. So working backwards, starting with Vice Mayor Pappan's suggestion of whether you could do an interview, application, interview process, and then pivot to calling a special election, she is correct, that is an option. So you could start the application, interview process, and then have a meeting, and if you decide, you know, we don't like any of the options or candidates, or we're going to call for a special election, that's certainly allowed under law, as long as you do it before October 22. So you have to, October 22 is when you turn into a pumpkin and you got to do something. You either got to call a special election, or you got to appoint someone. Going to Councilmember Schneider's questions, I think those are good questions raised. I'll try to address them. I took quick notes, so I apologize, Councilmember Schneider, if I don't answer some of them, you can ask me to clarify. I think there needs to be some clarity, because there may be confusion in the public as well, and Vice Mayor Pappan raised a good issue, bringing up the issue of City of San Mateo and how they dealt with a vacancy in their city. There's a difference between San Mateo and Millbrae, because San Mateo is what's known as a charter city. San Mateo, the voters back in the 50s passed a charter, which is basically like a little city constitution, which, under the code, the government code of California, allows them to set their own parameters on a wide range of issues, including how to fill vacancies. So there may be members of the public who are saying, well, I know that, you know, City X is able to appoint an interim council member until a special election. That is probably true if the city is a charter city and has made provisions for that. Millbrae unfortunately is not a charter city. They are what is called a general law city. And a general law city gains its powers through an act of the state legislature, when they enacted certain provisions of the government code to allow local residents to run their own cities. So as a general city, the City of Millbrae is bound, and I want to emphasize that word, they are bound by the provisions of the government code. Unless they were to go out and become a charter city, the current state of the City of Millbrae is that we are bound by the provisions of the government code. And while I certainly am sympathetic to Councilmember Schneider's, you know, thoughts, and I think she best represents the community in terms of, they may want, and it may actually be the best thing for the city to have an interim council member before a special election, that's simply not allowed under the current provisions of the government code. And I'll read the provision specifically. Government Code Section 365, 1, 2, subsection B, subsection 2, subsection capital B. If the vacancy occurs in the first half of a term of office, but less than 130 days prior to the next general municipal election, the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall hold office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent. So to break that down into plain English, the former council members and vice mayor were recalled
Something like
Sorry, my Siri is trying to talk to me. I don't think I said Siri anywhere in that.
That's where you get the law.
Yeah.
Keep going.
The recall occurred less than 130 days
Right.
Prior to the general election of November. So although the two council members were recalled during the first half of their term, meaning they were elected in 2022, and their first half would have ended November 2024, it happened less than 130 days prior to the next general municipal election. By operation of this government code, then the person that, if you choose to go the appointment route, shall hold the office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent. The word "shall," for those not educated in the law, is a mandatory term.
It's must.
That you have to do it, yes. And then the last point to Councilmember Schneider's point is, I would, to her point that this would be disenfranchising the voters in terms of how a recall would happen, actually, under a recall, under the Elections Code, under Elections Code 11220, if the members of the community did want to recall those two appointed members, they could. The provisions would be for them to get a petition, and the petition, number of signatures on the petition would be bound by the number of registered voters in each district. So it doesn't have anything to do with who voted in the last election. You would take the registration numbers for that district, they would have to go get a certain number of signatures, and I see the city clerk nodding at me, which gives me confidence, because she's the expert on all elections officials. So there would be a process that doesn't disenfranchise the voters if they indeed didn't like your pick and wanted to recall that person.
So just to clarify, the process at which to recall an appointed official is the same as the process that would require to recall an elected official? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I was trying to think what the former mayor of San Mateo had to go through in the numbers and which election that number was counted, but maybe that was at large versus district, where those numbers come in. The city manager and I have had talks, given everything else that Millbrae's been through the last year plus, about becoming a general, a charter city on that. If, for a bunch of different reasons that can't be on tonight's agenda, because it's not on the agenda, could we come back in the short term of what it would take for Millbrae to consider being a charter city and bring that to a future council meeting? We talked about it more because some of the cities in Southern California are using that to maintain local control over housing policies.
Yeah, we could, but that is not going to help this timeline
Okay.
Or situation. It would have to be brought up in a general election of the city, which would be
Next November.
November 26.
Okay, November of 26. So it's something that I would love to see, I won't be here, but I would love to see on our work plan, because it's just another tool that we need to protect a small city from, and I hate to sound like this, from those outside entities on there and these outside rules on that. Okay, so that won't work. So we either are appointing for two years and four months, or going to an election and leaving it vacant. We're going to be three seats right now until the process is used, whatever process that will be. And that would mean, by the time the new council members who are running for election right now are seated in mid-December, it would be the same situation for January, February, March, and portion of December. Just so that we make sure that that's clear when this comes back to us in a staff report, that there will be two brand-new council members come, what's the second Tuesday in Whatever the second Tuesday of December is on that. So it would be, it would be a time of running a council of three, meaning none of us can get hurt. Although apparently a quorum is two?
So
Or what is the quorum?
Councilmember Schneider, you're very wise. I was about to throw one more wrinkle into the council's consideration on whether to do an appointment or a special election. There is a case from the California Supreme Court from the 1930s where two council members from the City of Arcadia were recalled, and they had a council of three. Two of the council members refused, or, and to add to their woes, not projecting onto all of you, after the recall of the two, a third member resigned, leaving a council of two out of five. Those two council members said that we don't constitute a quorum, and so we are not going to vote. The California Supreme Court overruled them and said that for purposes of filling the two vacant seats, two constitutes a quorum, because by logic, you are now a council of three, based on the will of the people, not through any doing of yours. So for purposes of filling the appointment, the quorum is two. So two of you can act with only three. However, there is language in that case, which we law is called dicta, which means it's not necessarily binding, but it should be counted as persuasive, that seems to indicate the Supreme Court way back in the 30s suggested that for any other business, you need a quorum of three, meaning that it would put a tremendous amount of stress on the three council members between now and March, because if one gets stuck in traffic, under that case law, you could argue that you do not have a quorum of only two, and you couldn't do the people's regular business. With three, you're fine, because you still have a quorum of five. Again, that is not law, the way I read it, and there's been no case law to further interpret what the Supreme Court meant back in 1937, but it's sitting there, kind of just on the page.
I'll get to you in a second.
Can I?
Okay. One thing that I think it's important to bring up, and then I'll go to the Vice Mayor, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Schneider, I promise. So based on your explanation just a moment ago, that means to consider quorum, which also means from a Brown Act perspective, all of our subcommittee at this point cannot meet.
Yes. Yeah, that's the, thank you for bringing that up.
All of our subcommittee, whether it is. We've got a long list of subcommittees that consists of two council members, obviously two of which are no longer with us, but those subcommittee that all three of us now serve on, none of them can be operational, simply because that would have been a violation of the Brown Act.
And to explain, and to explain to the members of the public, Mayor, you're very astute, the Brown Act says that a majority of council members cannot discuss any item until it becomes an open and public meeting. When there were five of you, two of you could speak without violating the Brown Act, because two is not a majority of five. Now that there are three of you, if even two of you talk amongst, about any item, you could potentially be violating the Brown Act. So, yeah, you couldn't do any communications beforehand, you'd have to come to public meetings every single time.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Just to ask another question, which you probably don't have the answer to. So sometimes, a member is allowed to Zoom in if they're out sick. I don't know how that plays into the 1930 case, but something we should probably figure out, if a council member is somehow unable, or we don't want, doesn't want to infect the rest of the council for whatever reason, something we should know in order to continue the business of the city.
So, great question. We really are on uncharted territory here.
Yes.
There's very rarely two vacant council seats, but Vice Mayor Pappan, I actually, I don't know how I know this answer, but I do. They redid the rules for Zoom appearances and remote appearances recently to remove the emergency provisions that were put in place during the pandemic. So currently, a council member can appear remotely with approval of the rest of the council, but one of the provisions is that a majority of the council must be present in chambers.
So as long as we have two?
As long as you have two, I think one
One can call in. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Schneider?
Just for the public's sake, and thank you, I was going to bring up the fact that we are different in that if somebody is, to use your story, caught in traffic, they could call in on that, on that. I can say, this is finishing off my ninth year, I missed half a council meeting when I was sick, I got through everything but the last bit of new business. I was in Malta on city business and missed one before Zoom, and I mistaked a vacation and booked something on the wrong week. So in nine years, I have missed one, an So in nine years, I have missed one unexcused council meeting on that. I think Councilwoman Papen might have been sick once in our nine years together, and I don't believe the mayor has ever missed a council meeting. So the chances of missing council are slim on that. That said, in terms of the council subcommittees, when you are mayor, you spend a little bit more time talking to the city manager about activities, and we have a lot of council subcommittees that I would have been happy getting rid of and bringing straight to a council meeting for the discussion of the full council, because it has to come to the council anyway. You know, typically budget, we're not in that budget period, that starts more in March, maybe February. Most of my, I'm only on, I think, one or two council subcommittees. One of them didn't move forward, and that was how to redesign the council chambers to make them safe, you know, if somebody comes in with a gun. And I can't remember my other council subcommittee, so I'm not overly concerned about some council subcommittees for a couple of months. I'd actually rather have it come to council, so.
Yep. So, all right, are we good? So let's go ahead and take some public comment. I got four speakers live, and I got one online, and then we'll come back to try to finalize this discussion item. We've got Santana. Followed by Ray Louis. Oh, before you start it, just want to remind the public, we're going to stay on item number four, and I just wanted to remind the public, no campaigning is allowed in the council chamber, any governmental property. Go ahead, Santana, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Santana Van Vuij. I live in District 2, and I just want to thank all the council members for all your hard work. I think it's going to be difficult to get people to run for office. I really want to have some sort of poll, like you did at your community survey for all the public, to see what, who are interested in District 2 and 4. I do really want to find, to appoint someone for this position, to have this eight-month gap, I think is going to be very detrimental for city business. There's a lot to accomplish during this short time, and we need council members to be working together. That's the only way that we can thrive and be a stronger community. And if we don't have that, I think we're going to be in big trouble. So I think that we do need to speed this along, focus on city business, and I just want to say that anybody who steps up to be in council, I think as a community, we are going to be forgiving, you know? People who are new to council need to learn a lot. And I think it's going to take time, and I think the public are going to stand behind these new people, because the recall was something that, that needed to be done, unfortunately. I think it's because, for many reasons, but residents spoke out with their petitions, with their, the recall for the signature that made the recall happen. So I don't think it's something that is lightly used, but it was necessary, and, but I want to move city business along. And I vote for two appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Santana. Mr. Ray Louis. Followed by Judy Louis. Go ahead, Ray.
Good evening, Anders. Oh. Good evening, Anders, Ann and Gina. I agree with Gina on letting people into city government just to try them out. They don't have to be a politician, I think. I think they have to be highly, have to be, I would say, highly, high integrity person, very high. And they have to be very transparent, they have to be fiscally responsible, knowing what's coming into our pockets, into government's pocket, and what's going out. We need accountability, that's what I'm trying to say. And I also think that the most important thing is that the person, whoever it may be, need to use common sense. They don't have to be college-educated, they don't have to be whatever, okay, a politician, as long as they meet those criterias, I think we're going to be okay. And, Ann, I really admire you. You really stuck it to Callagie with the numbers. I mean, it was like machine gun fire, and he had nothing to say. He had nothing. I envy you. I would vote you for governor. That's no lie. But, yeah, yeah. So, Anders, thank you. Gina, thank you. And of course--
All right. Thank you, Mr. Louis. All right, we've got Judy, Judy Louis, followed by Li Shi Huang.
Good afternoon. Mayor Anders Fung.
Please get closer to mine so that we can capture you on the video. Thank you. Thank you, Judy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Anders Fung, and Gina, Anna. My name is Judy Louis, and I'm a District 2 resident for 17 years. I'm in favor of the appointments. It is necessary to appoint two city council members soon as possible, because they can represent the opinions of District 2 and 4 of the entire Millbrae citizens. And the special election will only waste our time and money for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Li Shi Huang. We have Helen Fu after.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Li Shi Huang. I live in District 2, and I support to fill the current vacancy on the city council by appointment rather than by holding a special election. Because there are two, there are only two years left in the post of District Council, which is not long. There is no need to waste tons of money on election again. Secondly, appointment can accelerate the formation of the city government's leadership team, thereby improving work efficiency and making important plans. Third, we can avoid letting those who temporarily moved to the city, who leave for the position, but not truly for the resident of the city. The election doesn't mean that we can get a good council member. Why don't we try? Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have Helen Fu. And then followed by online speakers.
Hello, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Helen. I'm a registered voter in District 4, in the city of Millbrae. I've been a Millbrae resident for 80 years. I am supportive of doing an appointment to fill vacancies in both D2 and D4, because it sounds like to me the eight months is just too long a gap to not having D2 and D4 properly represented on the city council. And it sounds like, based on the information I heard so far, it sounds like we do, it's imperative to have a fully function, fully functional city council to keep, to keep the city moving along, to ensure the normal day-to-day operations. And on top of that, the city just got out of a special election in July. I feel like, I'm not sure, like, if the city has more energy to do another special election, and on top of that, it costs money to do another special election. I'm just not sure if it's the best way to spend the city funds on another special election at this point. I guess as far as the candidates go, I feel like, maybe, as far as candidates go, I feel like, just like, sorry, I forgot her name, just like she mentioned earlier, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to have citizens to step up and then to try this role. So I feel like it's good to be open-minded and then to embrace the residents who are interested. So that's what I think on that. So I think it's imperative to ensure the continuity of having D2 and D4 properly represented on the city council. I'm supportive of doing the appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. City clerk, would you please call the online speaker?
The online speaker is Dan Sijent. Please accept a mute.
Councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. First of all, I'd like to thank outgoing council members, Maurice Goodman and Angelica Callahan for their service, turning lemons into lemonade. I do support the attributes that Ray Louis mentioned in a potential council member there. One thing I think you're missing is the, the great gift that you perhaps have been given here on a three-person council. Mountain View, Riverside, Palo Alto, all seven council members. Sometimes it's just a giant cluster. I regularly sit in about 21 council meetings throughout California, and Mr. Fung runs one of the tightest meetings I've ever seen. I would suggest that a three-person council now until November 5th, and that, sorry, the second week of December, and then a special election would both allow you to kind of move with lightning speed. You've got three seasoned council members that know how to get things done, they're familiar with it. You know, this isn't a beauty contest, and it's not a great place for learning on the job. By placing a special election anytime after January 4, which is 130 days, you allow yourself to also consider out the balancing of your new, whatever two new council members you add the second week of December, your March election will balance out whoever they are. But you've got three people, you've got three great people, you've got a mayor that really knows how to run a tight meeting, and I would suggest that you could do great things in this eight months, not average things. And suggest a special election. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think that's it for all the online speakers, and I think we're done with public communication on this item. Closing public comment, bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor?
So this, if we choose an election that March dates, so that's still a special election that we have to pay for? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, that should be the--
Cost?
Part of every, no, just a part of every report, that that would be a special election, the cost would be such. I mean, we just want to be completely transparent.
Yeah. I think maybe a little more clarity on it, as I understand it, and, you know, city attorney can weigh in here, is that it's a special election, but I think what the last speaker said, you can have a special election, but we cannot. It has to be a special election on a regularly scheduled election.
Correct. To get deeper into the government and Elections Code, you have to call a special election to fill a vacancy on the city council at a regularly scheduled election as identified by statute. And they identify the first Tuesday in November of every year as a regular election. They also identify the first Tuesday of March in an odd year, which would be 2005, as a regular election. So those are your two options. You also would have an option if you didn't want to do March, there would be an opening in June, first Tuesday in June, to have another election. So you would have March, June, or November of 2025 to fill this seat if you wanted to.
Wow.
Okay. All right. So just, I'll get to you in a second, but just to piggyback on that, Mr. City Manager, if you can just kind of give us an overview of the special election that we just have concluded, what was the cost of that, and that would likely to be similar if we are to call a special election in March 2025?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, the city clerk had contacted the county Elections Office to get an estimate of a special election, and she has it here, and I'll have her report.
City clerk, would you please?
So according to the San Mateo County Elections Office, estimate for adding two districts to the March election will cost $158,400. That's the estimated cost.
$158,000 in change?
Just for election services with the county, not including public noticing, which could just depends, like about $5,000, like $5,000 or $15,000, depending on translation, too.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Schneider?
I'm trying to think of the right metaphor here. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. If it was worth it to do an election to recall people, it is worth it to have an election for others. I think Mr. Stenning meant that if we called an election to fill seat 2 and 4 in the March election, he used the word "special election," but it would be in there. I will give you a little piece of happy news. I got a check in the mail two days ago from the county, giving me back almost $700, because they overestimated the cost of the supervisory election. Woo! So I'm $700 less in debt, and I think, given what else may end up being on that March, I personally believe an Article 34, if not 2, will be on that special election, but that'll be for either this council or the next council on that.
I think, Mayor, we should stay focused, because I have a rebuttal to that, but I'm going to choose to stay on, because I don't want to get into--
The cost of elections are a subset of the number of elections and the cost of doing the overall election. Okay, close, that's simply it on that.
Got you there. No, I just wanted to bring clarity into this discussion. You mentioned the special election that we had just concluded in July. That wasn't a choice of this council. That was the choice of the people. The people collected the signature, they put a petition together, they called a special election. My job as a mayor merely is to preside over it and to call the action, because the constituency wants it. So--
Mayor, it was our decision. And, again, I am in favor of what Vice Mayor Papen suggested. This is not you lording over all of us.
I'm not.
We made the decision that we had to make on that. But you either believe in the power of the people and their vote, or you don't. For tonight's purpose, I agree with the vice mayor of, let's investigate an application, let's bring it back to council with what should be included in that application, let's look and see what kind of candidates may rise from District 4 and District 2. I would like to see that the city also go back and get a second opinion, given the unique situation that we are in, in terms of the old, not so much the 1937 decision, but the decision that we cannot fill, and then if that, if we fill those seats and then they choose to run in a March election, why we can't do that. Just clarify for me why that is a horrible thing, because to me, that is the vote of the people, in which case we appoint to fill between now and March, which really means the election ballots drop in early February, which means the campaigning is January on that. It's not really, well, it is until they're sworn in. So I'd like to get a few more answers in writing, so the public can understand what's going on, on that. And again, leaning, I'm with Vice Mayor on her recommendations.
So-- If I may, I understand the policy, you know, the objective or the goal or the requirement of the council is to set policy. That's why we put up there specifically, because we do not want to confuse the public that you do not have that option, you only have option one or two. Unfortunately, you don't have that option to select an interim council member between now and a March election. The government code is clear on that. We will, I will absolutely seek another opinion for sure, but I don't want the public to be confused, because they're already confused, but I, so I think it's important for us to be clear on what the process is.
And if I may--
Legal?
Also interject as your attorney. I understand and respect Councilmember Schneider's desire to be transparent with her constituency. I think that's the hallmark of any elected official. My job as your attorney is to advise you of potential risks. And so as your attorney, I would say if you are seeking an opinion on what might happen if you were to appoint to these two seats and also call for a special election, my advice as your attorney is you take that legal counsel in closed session, because it would, in my opinion, expose the city to a grave danger of litigation. And before you decide, of course, as the council, you have the right to waive the attorney client privilege at any time, it is your prerogative, but I would urge caution in taking that advice, whether it come from me or a second attorney, if you want to hire one, I would advise you take that counsel in closed session so that you can digest it and then determine if you want to waive attorney client privilege and make that public. That's, as your attorney, I feel compelled to give you that advice.
All right. So just want to be clear, the July special election was not by choice of this council. The constituency called for it, we had to give it to them. This is the choice of this council, and this is the choice that three of us has to make. I want to be clear, and one more thing I want to remind everybody, we run the tight ship, and we don't talk over anybody else. Okay? Vice Mayor?
So again-- getting to discover who's in District Two and who's in District Four, how would one, I don't think we've done this before, how would one, again, if we, as I suggested, open it up, see who's here, let the public see who's here? How does one communicate with those districts to, and try to encourage people to participate in the process? How much time is needed for something like that? I guess we only have 60 days or less than that right now. So, you know, want to give the public as much opportunity to, and somehow we want to encourage them, too. You know, coming out of a recall, maybe people are not interested because of what they saw or something. I just, I wonder what's the best way to go about it? I'm just asking.
Right. So to that end, Mr. City Manager, I believe from a history, historical context perspective, there has been at least one time, if not twice, that we had appointed council members. I remember after the passing of Councilmember Holliver, Karen Rubin's mother, Nadia Holliver, we appointed Councilmember Annie Oliva. How was that process? How did that process played out? If we have a historical context of that, perhaps that's something we can study, if that is an example.
Yeah, and so again, the city clerk has researched back, and there was one other time, I can't remember the gentleman's name, that also passed away in office, and there was an appointment.
Oh, Jutain Andrews, Councilman Andrews.
Correct, yes. Councilmember Andrews. So with all that, I think I'll hand over to the city clerk, but it was very similar to what was discussed. Planning commission-type application process.
Right.
Interviews in public, selection in public. I think that
An application period of time, people can turn in their applications with their qualifications.
Correct.
A deadline, and then an interview process that is open to the public, subject to public inspections just in a council meeting such as this, and then the council debated, come up with a decision one way or the other.
Correct. And I would recommend a 30-day window for applications, and I know that that, you know, but I think that that's fair to the public.
Yes.
So time is of the essence. So let's say, you know, we started sending out September 2nd or a few days after that, you know, with September 30th or a few days after that being the deadline, we would significantly advertise, reach out to the community, especially those in District Two and District Four. Perhaps we do a mailer to each address, notifying people of this. I also see a series of neighborhood or community meetings for people that have questions or that are interested. So we'd be happy to host those as staff, city attorney, myself, city clerk, to advertise those meetings and just get as much advertisement, obviously, out there within the districts and within the community as possible.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So I've seen recently, I didn't read them because it didn't involve us, but like Burlingame had an advertisement in the newspaper. Did anybody look at it? What kind of?
Which one? They've done quite a few.
Yeah, I know. Well, and for appointment to a council member, I just wondered how they described it. I didn't read it.
I have copies of all of the postings in the Daily Journal of all of the cities that have had uncompetitive elections and filled seats. I have a whole collection of them.
Were those announcements sufficient or what? I didn't know what they said. That's kind of why I'm curious.
City Clerk?
So the city clerk of Samatello County, we do communicate and we do share information. So I gladly reach out to not only Burlingame, but also Samatello that did fill a vacancy. I believe it was like when Assemblymember Pappan took office, he did, she did vacate her position in Samatello as well. So therefore, I will have other resources, and then not only that, we'll do our normal channels, what public information officers typically do to help share the information. And not only that, as City Manager mentioned, we did have former vacancy by Nadia Holliver. We do have the application. We do have things that, you know, in our toolbox that we could utilize to help share the information with our public and be as transparent as possible and share that information. Like Mayor Fung mentioned, these applications are public-facing, maybe like not posted their personal information online, but just like what you would do with election paperwork, right? People could come and inspect these documents.
And it'll be available on the website?
Yes, with certain information, like, you know, we do there for election, basically for some official. We can't post their personal address online or their phone number unless they give us permission to do so.
There's some redacting to be done.
Yeah, but then, you know, public inspection of documents, they could do so in person.
Okay, all right.
Can I?
One second, one second. Go ahead, Councilmember Schneider, and then we'll come back to the Vice Mayor.
Good point. Samatello Daily City has also recently filled a position. Both of those are charter cities, not general law. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I know it's in good hands, Elaine. But I do have copies of everything that's out there and have been following this in terms of what district elections are causing.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'll go ahead and reach out to their city clerk as well.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I know this is a tad off here, but yes, the city council salary is way out of date, and I'm just wondering if prior to, we might be able to do something about that, because all the other cities are as well, and we want to encourage people to run. Given the question, I mean, people are like, how much time does this really take? And it's really hard to kind of figure out sometimes. Sometimes it takes longer, sometimes, you know, extra committees, that kind of thing. So again, we want to be as transparent as possible, and we also want to try to encourage as many people as possible. Right now, we make what? $340 a month.
$345.
$345, excuse me.
That's $5.
A whopping $345 a month, which is
Just to be transparent.
Yes, we're being transparent, and it's completely out of whack with some other cities. So I don't know. Again, this is not quite on topic, but we, I hope we'd consider in order to encourage people in the future, and we're not doing this for personal gain here, adding to that somehow.
Well, real quick, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So yes, we will be bringing that to the city council in September with the governor signing that law to increase council salaries. No matter what, it cannot go into effect until September 1st of 2025 for the city of Millbrae, based on the timing.
After the election?
No.
Pardon me?
After the election, correct.
It's after the election, correct. That's right. So it's after the November election, then it can take effect. So that's, that's based on law. We can get you information.
It will be for the council member coming after the general election.
Correct. It'll take effect September 1st of 2025, and it will move up to right around 1,000.
September, I'm sorry, 2024?
January 1st of 2025.
January 1st, 2025.
Will take effect. The ordinance brought forth from the governor signing of the law can take place anytime, so we will be bringing that to the city council for consideration in September.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, let's not, let's not get distracted. One thing at a time.
What you have to remember is the raise cannot take effect by law until September 1st of 2025.
September 1st.
I mean, I'm sorry, January 1st. I'm sorry, January 1st.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
January 1st.
All right. Okay. Sounds good. We got it. Schneider, do you have anything?
I don't know. You waited that long. My points have been lost, so.
Well, okay. All right. Well, when you do, then you let me know. Any further discussion on this topic? We need to make a motion and just make a decision?
Well, yeah, I'm just, what do we have to do tonight? Could we see, we asked Councilmember Schneider, ask for some additional information? What?
What do you decide?
Go right ahead, please. I'm asking.
So you only have 60 days, and I think time is of the essence. So it sounds like there's discussion to move forward with an application process.
Correct.
With, with the idea that if you want to shift, as the city attorney said, and council members have discussed, moving to a special election, you still have that opportunity to do that. I think that, you know, I would seek direction this evening so we can get the advertisement and get things moving so we can get people in District Two and District Four, information, ample time to fill out an application, because I do think 30 days is respectful of those candidates and any questions. And then we could bring it back to the city council, you know, right around September 30th or shortly thereafter. Then that gives the council a three-week window to schedule the interviews publicly, have those meetings, and then make a decision either to select or call for the special election in March.
As long as we're transparent.
Correct. So here's what I would suggest we do.
Of course.
And then we'll get to that, Councilmember Schneider. I suggest we open up a 30-day application period and have the first interview to be sometime in the first meeting of October, which is going to be the 8th, and then the deadline is, to make a decision, is October 22nd, which gives us an extra two weeks in case we need to make different decisions or change directions. We still have an opportunity to do so certainly within the purview of this council to do special meeting, should we so choose. But at least there are two meetings in October. We can make decisions and bring about more public engagement within those timeline. That's what I suggest this council to consider. Councilmember?
Just keep in mind that in October is Cal Cities. City Clerk, I've been meaning to have you cancel me on that because I've got a commitment to the youth club here. At that same time, I can't be in two places. So cancel me out of Council Cities, which is the 16th to the 18th. And Volunteer of the Year is also on the evening of the 18th. Beats and Brews special. Everybody come to the October 17th Beats and Brews, big special coming on that. So please cancel me on that. And in this case, if we end up calling yet another special council meeting in that week, it opens up that time because that's, usually we're gone, all of us are gone for four days.
So correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, the two scheduled council meeting date in October would be the 8th and the 22nd.
That is correct, Mayor.
And the Cal City is between the 15th and the 18th, which is on the week without the council meeting. Okay. So just to be clear on the timeline there. Madam Vice Mayor?
And for those who are listening here, I really want to encourage people. You hear that we, we want the public to see who you are. We want to hear from you. They want to hear from you. So even though, you know, we may not make a full decision at that point in time, please take part in the process and tell people who you are. Like, like I said, when my sister went through it, she didn't want to do, I'm just like, people need to hear who you are, how you feel about the city of Millbrae. It helps the public understand. It helps us understand. So I just want to be very encouraging, and I hope we all are, to the residents. This is a process. Democracy is not a spectator sport, but it is quite rewarding if you can and are willing to participate. So I really want to make sure, I know we are all going to be encouraging. So please, don't be shy, in other words. Just come on up. Thanks.
Okay. Any other further comment, the council?
And Mr. Mayor, can I ask for a point of clarification, just?
Go ahead.
So I'm tracking this. I understand about the application process being 30 days.
Minimum 30 days.
Minimum 30 days. On October 8th, which would be a normal city council meeting, is that the date that the council is saying that they will conduct the interviews and make a decision on whether to either appoint or call for a special election?
That's what I propose to this council.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I do, just from a legal perspective, the last day, the 68th day would be October 22nd, which would be your second meeting on Tuesday. But attorneys always get nervous when their clients are going to do something on the last day because, you know, you've talked about people being stuck in traffic or someone, you know, not being around. You know, you never want to run to that last day and be like, uh-oh, because then you have no more days after that to do anything. But that's a legal issue. It's not a policy issue. I just want to get clarification on what's going to happen on the 8th. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember?
Having been through that process myself, when Mayor Holliver passed away in office, I think there were six or eight of us who went through that interview process for that. And then there's an election, there's a council meeting after that process that was the approval on that. I know we have done one planning commission interview as part of a regular council meeting, but we have, we might have to have a special council meeting just for the interviews instead of backing us up into those meetings. I know the mayor likes to have meetings that do end before 11 o'clock, even though my first two council meetings went till 1:30 in the morning.
Even the public does.
So I think, I think we should keep in mind that the interviews, it does depend somewhat on the number of candidates, might be a special council meeting.
Or Mayor, or October 8th, we can start at 5 o'clock, depending on how many applicants we have.
But again, 5 o'clock, most of those candidates possibly still have a real job.
5:30 or 6, you know, depending, again.
One second.
You know, I'm just saying that
I understand.
That's what we can manage through that.
We can manage through those.
It makes for a hellish night for us.
Madam Vice Mayor?
May I?
My $340. Yeah, yeah.
May I make a suggestion? What if we do it the day before, like on a Monday night? Because then it just, it's a lot more relaxed, and people have time and do it after work. I think that's almost better because I want, we want the public to see who the people are. We want to see who they are, too. But I kind of would like that better, if that's possible.
Or Wednesday the night. It gives a full 30 days, right, then through the 8th.
We're going to have full 30 days regardless?
We can have a special meeting.
Yeah, so what, I think what the Vice Mayor is saying is a separate meeting date that is outside of the regular council meeting to do that interview process, depending on the number of, you know, I think we can kind of figure that out as we move forward here on the exact date at which that interview take place, whether it's the 7th or the 8th or the 9th, but I think it's within that realm here, depending on the number of candidates that we receive. I'm okay with that. Go ahead.
Going back to the City Manager, one of the reasons about starting at 5 o'clock, I now cook the meals at my house, and I have an elderly person to get ready for the evening, but there's a lot of people out there who have kids that need to get them fed. And if we want to be truly transparent and open for candidates, I'm always amazed for people that have young children and how much work that is. And that's where Zoom became really great. So having a meeting scheduled at a time that they can take care of family needs and then come in that relaxed atmosphere, I think is a great idea. So yes, I would agree to possibly not having it on a standard council night.
So with all of that.
Either the 7th or the 9th.
I just firmly believe that a 30-day window
Yes.
is paramount, so.
I agree with that.
So if we go through the 8th, then we can determine, based on how many applicants we have, a special meeting, the 9th, the 10th, you know, and maybe even the convenience of the applicants to see, you know, 7 o'clock at night, 6 o'clock. Even we've had special meetings during, you know, noon, so we can determine what would be the most beneficial and the most transparent, because I think, obviously, following the planning commission interview and selection process, that is public and it is transparent, so we're covered.
Okay, all right. So we'll just try to figure out the timeline on that first interview date here, correct? All right. So we're agreed to a 30-day application period. We need to set a timeline at which that 30-day expires.
We need an expiration date?
We need, well, the 30-days expiration day, of course. What do you say, October 1st? For that 30-day window period to close? And then we can pick the first date of interview, whether it's the 7th or the 8th or the 9th.
I would encourage us to give staff a little more flexibility. Staff, we have a big weekend coming up with Labor Day weekend, with the Art and Wine Festival. Let's give some breathing room and not back everybody up against the wall.
Well, what I was hoping to achieve here is that we have ample time to, for the application period, and then after it ends, all the information can be posted online for public inspection before the first interview day, which happens either on the 7th or the 8th or the 9th. That's what I'm trying to get at.
So whether it's the first, second, third, or fourth, there's time. We do our agendas four days before. If it's a Monday, it would be a Wednesday evening. I haven't, I don't have the calendar, I haven't pulled up my calendar. I just give you the flexibility.
If I may.
City Manager?
I'm looking at this as, what is the objective? And the objective is trying to notify the public within those districts and give them ample time to ask questions, to research, to figure out, you know. to ask questions, to, to research, to figure out, you know, if they want to submit an application or not, right? And, and so that's why I think that that time, so, I mean, within thirty days or so, so I think that that would cover it. I'm anticipating that we have, you know, three to four just information meetings that people can come, you know, town hall type meetings. People can come and ask questions of staff and what is the process and how much time and, you know, all, all of that stuff. And so we can, we can certainly do that, you know, starting, you know, immediately or the end of this week, early next week, to start getting that word out and notifications and scheduling those meetings. So that week of the first, either way, yeah, I mean.
So I would imagine we make a decision tonight in terms of a direction?
That's really what we're looking for, Mayor.
Right. We need to provide a direction to the staff to open up this application period after tonight. And then give it a minimum thirty-day window. We need to set a deadline. I suggest October first. I welcome suggestions here unless someone else wants to have an alternative. And then we have a first meeting on the seventh.
Again, whether it's the first, second, or third, I don't, I, I would leave it up. Let staff figure it out.
Okay, all right.
On that.
So if that's the direction that we provide it to the staff, we can, that's my motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further comments?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we advertise as much as possible.
Absolutely. And as and as open and as transparent as possible. That's what I promised the constituency on the town hall meeting. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The city council provided direction to staff regarding filling vacancies in District two and four seats by the vote of three to zero with the application process and then to continue there.
Excellent. So that concludes tonight's agenda. Now goes into, anybody want to do council comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes. Well, I had a very interesting day looking at the underbelly of the Bay Bridge. Just informationally speaking, we have, I think, eleven bridges in San, in Bay Area, and they are all very costly in upkeep because you have to paint them all the time, you have to inspect them all the time, and you have to repair them, keep going. Right now, the major construction or support is on actually the San Mateo Bridge, which is a cement bridge and really needs a lot of repair at this point in time. So very educational. So I know we all complain every time we cross a bridge as to the costs, and I just want you to know, the upkeep is extreme for all the right reasons, though. We have to keep the bridges up. We have to keep them operational. We have to keep them safe seismically and everything else. And a new thing I learned too is every time there's an incident, I think it was Baltimore, where a ship hit one of the pillars, we have to add on barriers and all kinds of things to keep them safe. So just sharing that information with you all because it was very, very interesting and more to come because I'd like to hopefully share exactly where you see rust spots and everything like that. All that stuff has to be repaired throughout the years as we go. So thank you for that opportunity.
Your Vice Mayor? Councilmember?
Three things. I, my computer battery just decided to go to sleep. High-speed rail is having, they're bringing back their working group. Millbrae had never had a representative on the working group until I was able to get at least one representative who happens to be Nathan Chan, wearing the Sierra Club hat. They are having a public meeting, but rather than having it in Millbrae, where high-speed rail has big impacts, they're having it at the Burlingame Rec Center, and it's coming up in a couple of weeks. City Manager, I would love to make sure that we get that out in all of our social media. On that, I have tried to get High-Speed Rail to have it here in Millbrae. They claim that it was ever so difficult to find a meeting space. It is the only meeting for High-Speed Rail between San Francisco and San Jose. So, and we are, and Brisbane are the two most impacted communities. Sure, sure.
Yeah, can we be specific? Because lately, they've just said, we're having a public meeting, and they're only talking about like the southern part.
This is actually for the San Francisco to San Jose reach. This is the San Francisco, San Jose reach stakeholders group. But the problem is, the city never got to be a stakeholder. Only NGOs, non-governmental organizations, could be on the stakeholders group. And that's why Nathan Chan of the Sierra Club was one. I tried to get the Lions, I tried to get a bunch of different groups so we had a voice there on that. And then they disbanded it after they approved the EIR, but now they're bringing it back, and we should be there. And staff should be prepared for that. On SFO Roundtable, this is in the weeds, everyone. We had tried for the last two years to change the noise metrics that the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, uses. And sadly, the noise, the change in the noise metrics did not get into the reauthorization. However, the devil is always in the regulations that follow the, the legislation. And at the roundtable, we talked about still trying to dig into the, what could be in the regulations. The issue is that the noise that hits Millbrae is from in back of airplanes. The FAA only cares about noise when the plane is five feet above the ground. So we have been trying to get, recognize the noise that greatly impacts the closing communities of Millbrae, Burlingame, and Hillsborough. The other ones get that same noise, but they get it because the airplanes are on top of them. And they discount completely the airplanes that fly over us in bad weather, which is called reverse flow. So there's a little bit of luck with that. There'll be some meetings coming up in October and November to make sure we keep an eye on the FAA regulations on that. And it is critical in terms of our relationship with San Francisco. San Francisco Airport also announced two weeks ago that they've gotten the data from the temporary noise monitors in Millbrae and up at the water plant. And they hope to have that data soonish. But I will tell you that the noise reports are very hard for anyone to try to understand. It would behoove the city of Millbrae, and I mentioned this at the roundtable, that we, especially the closing cities, look at how that report is written and get the data that actually serves us and present the data in a way that serves us on that. And then finally, One Shoreline, which is another joint powers authority. Our representative is Mayor Donna Colson of Burlingame. They had their board meeting yesterday. The one main agenda item was the public outreach plan for what will happen in Millbrae and Burlingame in terms of sea level rise. I had thought I was giving them all a tour on the twenty-eighth, which I believe is tomorrow, but I haven't heard back from them. But they are supposed to have meetings. They are supposed to have meetings here in Millbrae, and there should be happening over the next three months. So we need to make sure that we get the public. We need to make sure that they're not just telling Burlingame's story. The current suggestion is a wall, although in Burlingame, they will build two brand-new wetlands and a beach. And in Millbrae, option one and option two is a wall that will end pretty much where our sewer and our Highline Canal outreach is. So it would behoove us to make sure that we are telling our story too. My intent for the tour is to say, we have a lot of stuff happening right at Highline Canal and the East Side specific plan. And what this JPA dictates to us in terms of sea level rise can have an impact of how we protect all of the cities subjected to flooding on that. And then it was amazing to figure out and to learn at a council meeting two weeks ago that we pay for the pump station that we must have because 101 and SFO were created, blocking our ability to drain the water that runs in Millbrae. So these are sort of three big environmental issues that I think can all be tied into the East Side specific plan. And City Manager, will we have an update shortly on how that, I think we were drafting the language for going out to bid for a consultant for that East Side specific plan? Will it happen while I'm still on council?
The, the RFP will be released, correct?
Do we have a timeline on that? Just a basic, general, general?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Consult with the community of value.
Okay, because that's, that's critical.
The RFP is written and ready to go.
And everybody might think that that's the east side, what happens on the east side, but all of us that live on the hills, all the water that falls on us ends up in them. So we're all together in this and needing to work together on this. So those are the three big, so much for August being the month off, but some exciting meetings. And I really, really, Millbrae, we need you guys to show up at these meetings. It's critical. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the update. I just want to bring about, to the attention to the public, that Millbrae had just last week approved ninety-seven unit of one-hundred percent affordable housing at thirteen oh one Broadway. Despite, some might choose not to believe that we're not for housing, we are for housing. This is the type of project that fifty percent would have been offered to household making less than or at eighty percent of the AMI. And this is the type of project that is built for seniors, for families, for children who wants to be in this community. And Millbrae is at the table to provide you impactful, immediate, and cost-effective housing solution to those who need it the most, the most vulnerable part of our community. So I want to make sure that this is, I want to make sure that this is on the top of agenda. And I'm thankful that the Daily Journal had a chance to cover that. Obviously, you know, this has been an eventful year, to say the least. You know, we just finished a special election, and this is the time, the type of events that seem a little divisive sometimes. But, you know, after the election, it's time for us to heal as a community, as a city. And this, the appointment process of this new council members, all of these things that we're doing is hopefully we can bring the community back together as quickly as possible to that healing process to take place. And all of you in the audience tonight, I thank you for being here and those online joining us as well. Continue to be engaging civically and telling us what you think and how this city needs to be run because we're here to listen to all of you. I want to tell you that. And also Art and Wine Festival coming up this weekend, Labor Day weekend. And this is the opportunity to bring the communities together. Everybody come out, celebrate. We have the wine glass here in front of us. And then also the fourteenth as well. We have, we also have the Moon Festival celebration. And Millbrae is a city of festival. And this is the time to bring the community together and demonstrate to everybody else, the rest of the county, if not, if not the rest of the state, that we can unite and as one people, and we're stronger as one. And I want to thank everyone in Millbrae for that. With that, do you have any follow-up?
I'm sorry, because we can't talk to each other. Thank you to staff for Beats and Brews. They brought in the group to talk about the San Francisco Bay Trail, the SFO Gap. That was fantastic. I have been playing around on their website. This is to the Vice Mayor. MTC has sent out a final plan for filling in all of the Bay Gap. So I went to the plan, and it doesn't include Millbrae, and they had just met with us here two weeks ago. And then when you point on the, point on the map for Millbrae, it says San Bruno, and it gives the San Bruno equity data. So of course I have written to them. I've called them several times. They have not called me back. I don't know if I can copy Gina because I'm still the liaison to Millbrae Bike Pedestrian Committee. This is exciting times. We may finally get a Bay Trail that actually has some nature in it. This is another good thing. But, and, and they were great last week, or at Beats and Brews, but it doesn't sound like the two sides are talking to each other. I don't know how to talk to Gina other than doing it here, but.
So, Ms. Mayor, if I may, because I think it's important to govern correctly.
Yeah.
These are items that are not on the agenda, and you're
We're just on council comments.
And it's council comments, and it shouldn't be
Purely informational.
An agenda item. So with all due respect, I mean, I think we need to adhere to.
Well, I'm confused. And so can I ask then to bring the Bay Trail Gap to a future council meeting so we can talk about it? Okay.
Certainly. Properly agendize it. Do you have any final comment?
Yes.
Has to be soon.
And so we're reporting out, Liberty Bank opened up
Yes.
at the Millbrae Bart Station today, right next to the hotel there. Also, there was the opening of Brothers Cafe, where previously known as the Little Whale. So we encourage all, please check out the new businesses that come to Millbrae. And I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the city staff in working to get what looks to be a very exciting art and wine festival ahead. So I will hold up the glasses now that we have them. Get your little Millbrae glass. I look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
All right. With that, I adjourn the meeting tonight at seven forty-three.
Recording stopped.